The peace, the divide of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, welcome, everybody.
Who's Rick? Yeah, I think, any idea?
You in DC?
Okay, I think we have a couple of proclamations here today, and we have Dublin Business Appreciation Day Friday, March 14th, representing CEO of UpDox, Michael Morgan. Would you like to come forward? Want to face the camera over here, then? So, we have our Business Appreciation Day coming up Friday, March 14th, and basically, we are celebrating St. Patrick's Day with the Dublin Economic Development Team. We'll be taking three Irish bands around to nine different companies, and I know I'm going to be involved. I think we'll have some other council people that may join in. Tim, you're going to be involved, and that's always a great time. So, tonight's proclamation is being presented to UpDox. Accepting this proclamation on behalf of the company is Michael Morgan, CEO. And let me read this for you. Whereas Dublin, Ohio is known for its thriving corporate community, from its large international businesses to its emergency companies, built with robust entrepreneurial spirit, and whereas the Dublin business community enables smart and innovative organizations to achieve their business goals by providing an exemplary environment for success, and whereas the vast majority of new jobs created in Dublin have come from existing businesses within this community, and whereas Dublin's continued economic vitality is the result of high-quality development supported by the city's existing business community, and whereas Dublin is proud that over 3,000 companies have chosen to make Dublin their home, the City of Dublin is a beneficiary of exemplary service by nearly 70,000 employees within our community, and whereas Dublin businesses have contributed significantly to the overall economic well-being of Dublin, the central Ohio region, and the state of Ohio, and whereas the city expresses its sincere appreciation to all Dublin businesses and employees for choosing to work and create in Dublin, and whereas the city invites all Dublin businesses and employees to celebrate the Irish spirit present throughout this community, not only on St. Patrick's Day, but throughout the year. Now, therefore, I, Michael Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, March 14th, 2014, as Dublin Business Appreciation Day. And I'll present that to you, then. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Keenan, and the council, for including UpDox in this day. Also, just want to thank the City of Dublin and the council for all the efforts to make Dublin a very business-friendly community. Just real briefly, you know, UpDox is a startup healthcare technology company. We've been in Dublin since 2009, since our founding, and great place. We've really enjoyed being here. We've grown from four employees to now we're up to 20, and we expect to be at 30 by the end of the year. So, very, very excited about the growth. We're located, actually, downtown, 94 North High Street, and it's been just a wonderful location. Really helped with recruiting, a lot of young talent coming in downtown. As many of you know, our building's the one slated to come down with the Bridge Street project, and I did want to say, we were looking and said we could use that as an opportunity to leave, but we decided that wasn't even an option. We wanted to stay in Dublin, very, very excited. And we've been working with Crawford-Hoeyng to find a temporary location, and we're actually working to sign a letter of intent to come in and be one of the first tenants back into Bridge Street project. Our goal is to be over 70 people by 2016, 2017, and we look at that, it's going to be very strategic for us to recruit young talent. We're trying to recruit nationwide. We have over 20,000 users of our system now nationwide. So, very excited, very excited about our future, future with Dublin, and thank you very much for seeing us today.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. You're right in the heart of it there. Are you going to participate in the best legs in a kilt contest?
I've been trained.
Okay, all right, good deal. Okay, and then we have yet another proclamation, and this is for National Athletic Training Month. Many initiatives the city's committed to promoting healthy lifestyles, and two of our most prominent successes are the city's Healthy By Choice Benefits Plan, which focuses on employee overall health, as well as Community-Wide Healthy Dublin Program that offers wellness, education, fitness programs, and preventive health risk measures to residences and businesses throughout Dublin. Accepting this proclamation is Eric Layton. Eric, are you here? Yeah, there you are, who is the lead athletic trainer at Nationwide Children's Hospital, Sports Medicine, 5680 Venture Drive. So, with that, I will read this proclamation. Welcome. Whereas certified athletic trainers have a long history of providing quality health care for athletes and those engaged in physical activity based on specific tasks, knowledge, and skills acquired through their nationally-regulated educational process, and whereas the services provided by certified athletic trainers include prevention of injuries, recognition and evaluation of injuries, aggressive treatment of injuries when necessary, and rehabilitation, and certified athletic trainers also work in areas of healthcare administration, education, and guidance, and whereas the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and supports 39,000 members of the athletic training profession employed in such areas as professional sports, colleges and universities, high schools, clinics, and hospitals, corporate and industrial settings, and military branches, and whereas leading organizations concerned with athletic training and healthcare have joined together in a common desire to raise public awareness of the importance of the athletic training profession and to emphasize the importance of quality healthcare within all the above settings, and whereas such an effort will improve healthcare for athletes and those engaged in physical activity and will promote certified athletic trainers as health professionals. Now, therefore, I, Michael Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as National Athletic Training Month.
I want to say my sincere thank you to Mayor Keenan, City Council, and the City of Dublin. Nationwide Children's Hospital is very, very proud to be part of the Dublin community. As the mayor said, we do work, a lot of work here in Dublin. We get to work with the City of Dublin employees at the City Employee Health Fairs. We have five buildings alone here in the Dublin campus, covering the spectrum from genetics to physical therapy, developmental therapy, and of course, sports medicine, and the urgent care that we provide over at Dublin Methodist Hospital. This is actually the only, this is the second sports medicine orthopedic building dedicated only to children, to pediatrics. We are the only hospital in the entire country that has two of them, and we're very proud to say that one of them lives right here in Dublin. We are very happy to be part of the community, and we look forward to working further with you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. I think this brings us to the point in the program with citizen comments, and I see Mr. Mauer has signed up. Mr. Mauer?
Your Honor and City Government, I have two items. First, you'll recall that there have been two major blizzards in the city, and the heroic driver of the snowplow that does the streets, who is the envy of every city in the country, has had snow during the last few months, knocked down my post box twice on each occasion, and my post box, it's not extending over the road, and it's a very expensive box. One of my sons put it up because I told him one time I went out to get my mail, and I had to step out in the street for it, and there's a pile of it in, and I yanked on it, and I lost my balance and fell into the line of traffic, though I had looked way ahead, and I scrambled back in time. But at any rate, knocked down my box twice, and I had to go out there in the noon hour in the cold, and with my fingers, which are my current leverage device to getting around in society, plying a piano, et cetera, I had to fix the thing. It's a very smart box. It has three parts, and it fits very narrowly in the grooves. You've got to get it just right to get it in there. But twice was too much. Anyhow, I got it up and going again. Well, one of the issues was, of course, that you can't deposit mail in a place where there's no box. And I went down to the post office here in the city, and I asked them, what happens if you don't have a box? And they said, well, your mail is probably taken over to the main post office and put in a slot appropriate to your area, and maybe the mailman brings it and puts it in again, or you mean it has to go over. And I was concerned because I knew there was some piece of mail which involved thousands of, a couple thousand dollars. I mean, not the money itself, but access to it. And I thought, if that goes, I, you know, I might talk to the city about that. Anyhow, that's one item. And I don't know what you'll do about it. As I say, the box has not reached way over at all.
Mr. Mauer?
Yeah?
If I can give you a little advice. Years ago, my first or second year on council, my mailbox was also knocked over by a plow driver inadvertently, and I placed a call to the service department, and within a couple hours, they had folks out there that put the mailbox back up so that I could receive my mail on that day.
Yeah.
And then when the weather cleared later on in that spring, I had a mailbox replaced. So, what you need to do is call the city service department, let them know what happened, and they will take it from there. And I'm pretty sure that we do a really good job at taking care of our residents when that happens. So, you wouldn't need to get out there and hurt your fingers, and we know you're saving them for your piano playing, and you should.
Well, thank you for that information.
Yeah, just make a phone call and...
We'll get her done.
All right, good.
Our service director is nodding. That's exactly what you should do.
Well, now you've softened me up because I have a second item, which is not very pleasant. I wasn't able to go to the State of the City program. So, I tuned in on the email, on the video television broadcast of it, and I don't know whose toes I'm going to be stepping on here, but here we go. The master of ceremonies was a ex-football player from OSU, and he was clearly turning the thing into a football rally. Now, let's have a big applause for X. Let's have a big applause for so-and-so. And I need to say, the city manager there put as good a face on it as she could, but I was really enraged when he patronized Ms. Mumma. Now, those of you who are in government, everybody else in the city probably knows that Ms. Mumma is one of the greatest catches the city management has ever had. She's a financial wizard. So, he puts a question to her, and I couldn't hear it, and it sounded as if she was muttering or mumbling, and as if she was muttering and mumbling because she didn't want to be heard, because she thought if she was heard, she'd be pointed out as a fraud. But at any rate, she muttered, or so it sounded, and nobody, he didn't have the grace or the thoughtfulness to give her a microphone, and I must say that nobody in staff either thought of it either. She should have had a microphone, because I know she had a lot to say and very important things to say. So, he annoyed me, and I'm glad I wasn't there, because I might have gotten thrown out. So, that is...
They did actually hand her a microphone, because her, she had a lapel microphone on, but it wasn't working properly. So, they did walk up and hand her a hand microphone when they realized what was happening.
But she was done by then.
No, 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 no. She repeated. She started. It had only been a couple minutes, and so she repeated what she had started with.
Well, you know, that's the danger of getting angry. I got so angry, I turned it off.
Well, see, that's what you shouldn't be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to remove anything?
The minutes looked fine.
Call set. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Ian?
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zarker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Ordinance 70-13.
Res zoning approximately 10.5 acres located on the west side of Paul Blazer Parkway between the intersections of Rings Road, Park Center Circle from PCD Plan Commerce District to PUD Plan Unit Development District to modify the development text and preliminary development plan regarding sign and parking requirements.
Ms. Roush?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is ordinance 70-13, which was introduced to City Council back in August of 2013, and includes modifications to the development text and preliminary development plan related to parking and sign requirements for the property located at 5515 Park Center Circle. As everyone is aware, the 10 and 1/2 acre site is located on the south side of Rings Road, west of Paul Blazer Parkway. The existing 116,000 square foot building is located in the southern portion with parking located to the west and to the north, with a significant tree stand located within the northern portion of the site adjacent to the retention pond. This proposal, as I stated, was introduced, and council had some concerns during the first reading regarding the site design and the removal of the landscape island and the trees located within that. Since that time, the applicant has revised their submission to what is before you on the screen, which reorients the parking spaces, provides some additional landscape and trees within the interior of the parking area, as well as providing additional replacement tree areas located on the site. The proposal does continue to show the removal of eight trees due to their fair and poor condition within that northern parking, excuse me, landscape area, and then the relocation of six trees identified as good, and they are smaller-sized trees, to be relocated on site from that same landscape area. The modifications would then permit additional parking for the site from the existing 571 spaces to 677 total with these proposed modifications. This proposal continues to meet the lot coverage and landscape requirements within their text and then the code as well. There is a condition established as part of the planning commission's review of this and recommendation of approval that requires the applicant to demonstrate and secure a tenant with documentation that they would need to make this modification to the site. So, they are required to provide that to the city, and then in addition, they have to gain final development plan approval from the commission should council approve this modification. And then the second part is related to the signs, which would permit a combination of signs, two monument signs, which would permit tenant names, one located here at the intersection of Park Center Circle and Paul Blazer Parkway, and then another at this Paul Blazer entrance, and those would be permitted to have the tenant names. The text also would permit then address numbers only should these buildings be divided up as multi-tenant to help a particular visitor to the site determine which building they need to enter. In addition, they would then be permitted some, for the proposed text, some smaller directory signs adjacent to the building entrances, so once you were on the site, you could determine which building entrance you should go in as well. So, with that, we've also provided at council's request some proposed sign details for council's reference. The final details of that would be required to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but this gives you a general sense of what these could look like. But like I said, the final details and locations would be approved through an FDP. So, with that, the conditions as outlined for the Planning and Zoning Commission have either been addressed within the text, as you have it before you, or will be addressed through the final development plan process, and Planning Commission provides a recommendation of approval to City Council, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Great. Questions?
I have questions. Looks like Tim does as well. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, thank you. I wish we didn't have to do this, you know, but I recognize that it's arguably a necessity, you know, in today's market. And in this particular instance, and I would imagine in most other instances, you know, the priority for me would be the sufficiency of the perimeter screening, and, you know, I think in many cases, that's in the form of mounding. A concern, though, with respect to this site is that when I visited the site, you know, the mounding is, there's more mounding on Paul Blazer, and it was, you know, I mean, I think that as a matter of policy over the years, I mean, we've wanted for the driving public to not be able to see, for the most part, the parking spaces. And here, the elevation of Rings Road, for example, I don't know whether this is unique, but, you know, the elevation of Rings Road relative to the parking lot, and there's not a lot of mounding along Rings Road.
There's those beautiful trees.
Excuse me?
There's those beautiful trees that...
Were you talking about where the picnic area is?
We didn't want to hide them behind, I think.
Right, right. So, that's, you know, and I'll rely on you, or John, or somebody else, you know, in terms of, you know, I've looked at the key in terms of the species and so forth, but, you know, I would just be concerned, you know, with respect to the screening, particularly on Rings Road. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Amy?
Jenny, is there a requirement, or might we put a requirement in place as far as the length of the lease required? Because I think, you know, we wouldn't want, we would want to make sure that we have a lease of, you know, a number of years before we would invest in, you know, this unimprovement, I should say, to the site. You know, I would argue that these, you know, trees aren't worth it, but that's for another, a few moments later. But did we talk about a length of a lease so that, you know, we'd have some sort of security that that building is going to be occupied with a going concern?
That was not discussed as part of this, and I'm not sure how we would enforce that or how to make that possible, and I understand your concern.
Yeah.
It would be a significant improvement.
We're not making the improvement. The owner of the...
True.
No, we're approving...
Right.
If this is approved tonight, we would be approving the destruction of these trees, which I would argue is not worth it unless we, you know...
Let me try to clarify. I think Mr. Hale will probably be able to address that when they make the deal for the lease, whether it's five years or a 10-year lease. Normally, commercial leases are either five or 10 with an option, so I'm sure he'll be able to address that tonight.
Okay.
They must have some idea what this tenant's looking at.
You want to hear from the applicant, Amy?
In a second. I have one more question.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to the signage, you said we could have multiple tenants, and my concern is that if we have, say, four businesses in there, we wouldn't be able to read the names. You know, we've had a number of other businesses that have insisted on these multi-tenant signs, and then when you're driving, you can't see. You just see text.
Right.
So, in that case, you know, are these buildings going to be named something, or are we just going to allow, you know, five little lines and enlarge the sign for that? I guess I want to make sure that if we're going to change our sign code and modify it on the site, that it is something that's actually going to be legible and useful to the traveling public and the getting businesses.
That still has to go through planning and zoning, in any event.
Yeah, the, I mean, the sign would be able, be permitted either under our existing code or through the text to have either. So, that would ultimately be up to the applicant and approved by the planning commission to what is on there.
Okay, well, I wanted to make a note for the record.
Okay.
So noted.
All right.
Want to hear from the applicant now? Any other questions?
No.
Thank you all very much. You know, this building has been on the market for quite a while, and we've had a number of people who we thought were very good potential tenants. And the fact is that because of the waiting time that was involved, you know, these, one of the things that we've found, is I think this has been true forever, but these companies are growing. They have to, they have to be able to address their needs, and you tell them, you know, we'll see, we'll get you an answer within six or eight months, that's a no. It really is. They're just not going to, they're not going to, they can't wait. And so, you know, one of the things we do believe, though, is that a tenant would allow us to go to, you know, once we've got this approval, then we're going to get a fairly, you're entering into a product, a process that's relatively predictable in terms of time and outcome, because I think in most instances, when we work closely with staff on final development plans, that it's pretty predictable that we've got, you know, we've got answers that the planning commission, they may do some stuff to us, but we know pretty much that we're going to, we're going to get, we're going to get through the process. But, you know, this building is not unique. I have one tenant over the last eight years. We, on what, we did a substantial increase in their parking, and they just called fairly recently, and they need to add another 350 spaces. They haven't added a one square foot, not one square foot of space. So, the fact that these people are shrinking their employees into smaller spaces because everybody, you know, they don't even have to have servers anymore. Everything's in the cloud. And so, their needs in these, in the workspace has just shrunk. And so, I think this is a, I think this building is unusual in the fact that we were able to meet what we think the current standards are and still be, I think, I think our lot coverage here will, after we, after we do these things, will be 65 square feet, I mean, 65% lot coverage, and the required lot coverage in Dublin is 70. So, we're going to be well into the lot coverage, and we're going to replace all these trees, tree for tree, and we are going to do a lot of that out in the, you know, out in the setback areas. So, and we don't, this, to do this, we're probably talking about, you know, something in the range, probably by the time it gets down $100,000. We're not going to go out, we don't want to go out and spend $100,000 unless we have a tenant, and a tenant that needs this space. So, we, we had no issue at all with saying, hey, we'll make this thing conditioned on us having a tenant that we have to prove to your staff that they actually have this need, or we won't do this. If we've got a tenant that can live with it, we'll live with it, because we don't want to spend, you know, the $100,000. And we're happy with that. And almost all these tenants are, they're almost always five-to-10 year leases. Typically, unfortunately for the landlord, the tenant usually wants four or five, five-year extensions. You know, we'd be happy if they take a 20-year lease, but they, but they won't do that. You have one tenant in town recently who came in and moved into a building, a pretty big tenant, and they have a relatively short lease because they've said, you know, during this period, our first lease, we're going to be trying to solve this, this problem, because if we can't solve it, we're going to, we're going to take our business, and we're going to go find someplace else. We're going to build another building. So, but this building will not be in that shape after we get this done. We'll have a building that's absolutely competitive in the marketplace. And even though I'm a zoning lawyer, have been my whole life, you know, I look at all real estates, especially these kind, this kind of real estate, as a tremendous asset to the city. These are, these are assets that cost a lot of money to build and a lot of money to replace. And, you know, new buildings are your future, and we're all out there running around trying to attract these new buildings, but buildings like this are as much your future as anything else. This is a lovely building, a good building, very well-built building. And so, we believe that we will get tenants. And again, we're not going to do this if we don't have to. And if we have to, it's going to be determined by your staff. So, we think we're very lucky. We think you're going to have other buildings out here that the solutions are going to be much more difficult and probably are going to cost the city money, because you're going to have to help, you're going to have to help the tenants figure out ways to provide the parking, either through garages or remote parking lots or whatever. So, I think this is a fortunate circumstances for the city and for the owner of the building. So, we would hope that you would approve it, and, you know, we want to be your partner. We think, you know, your business development people are going to play a huge part of us getting a tenant.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. We appreciate it. We're very well aware of the economic realities and with respect to the parking and the changing needs, the lack of storage that's now not needed because it's put in the cloud in other places. So, and we heard a lot at goal-setting about this, so I appreciate your comments. Mr. Mauer, I see you've signed up for this.
I have a couple of points which might strike you in isolation as picky, or picky for short, but if you put them under a context which I take from Councilmember Reiner, who will now look up for a moment. This was two or three years, two or three years ago when he, when he gambled with his political... he, when he gambled with his political capital in the effort to push through a piece of legislation of highly formative and steering in this city. And the legislation was called, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, my mnemonic device for it is CD, Conservation Design, right?
That's correct.
And what it meant essentially was that the city should be so constructed that one could stand up at any point and see the real, live earth beyond. Well, in that context, the points I want to bring up are these. There are references in a couple of places to the trees, and the trees in good and fair condition, or the trees in any condition. And my question is, what constitutes fair, say, in terms of survival under normal conditions? If you put in a fair tree, you put it in, I presume, because you think it'll survive under normal conditions. I guess that's what, is that right? Is that what fair would mean in relation to trees?
The trees are assessed by an arborist. In this instance, they provided...
They what?
They, the trees are assessed by an arborist, a certified arborist, so they determine based on their knowledge whether a tree is in good, fair, or poor condition.
Yeah. So a fair one has a pretty good chance, probably.
Yes, it's in the middle, basically.
Okay. Another question. In the development text, there's a reference to height limitation. And the statement there is the height limitation is 100 feet. Now, if my memory of code on heights in Dublin is correct, I think the maximum was or is 45 or 50. Is that right?
It depends on the development. Within this particular development text, it was specified at 100 when this was originally created. This, this has not been modified from the original approval of that. So it ultimately depends on where you are.
Okay. I, oh, there's a, under signs and directional signs, I found this statement which I couldn't intellectually parse. Signs will present a high-quality corporate image. I don't know what that is.
Our Planning Commission determines that.
What?
Our Planning Commission will determine that at the final development plan stage. This is to give the applicant sort of a guideline, what our expectations are, but that would ultimately be determined by the Planning Commission.
Okay. So if I wanted to get at it, I should get to the people who establish these references, right?
I think you can look in general around Dublin and where our corporations are located, and you can see the taste that's been required of corporate signs. I don't think there's anything magic to it. This isn't new language or anything. This is what we've consistently been requiring corporations to do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Are there any other council discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Jenny. It said that the landscaping fits the Dublin Landscape Code, and I know the code states that, you know, you have to screen your parking lot from all sides visually as you pass around it. And I was just wondering, was that accomplished through mounding? It's not on here. Is that...
The, I would, yes, with the plan, they would have to adhere to the requirements of that with grading, mounding, and trees located on center.
And are they willing to do that?
Yes, absolutely. If they weren't, then they would have to modify that within their text. So their intent is to meet the landscape code in their plan.
And then the other, the other thing I couldn't find was, looking at the plan view of this, I couldn't discern what of these were deciduous and which were evergreen. And again, sort of related to screening all the cars and the visual pollution of the glass and the chrome and that. So couldn't really tell what was what from this. Will we have a further input into that?
Absolutely. When they come through with the final development plan, the specific species of what they would replace them with would be required as part of that Planning Commission review. So we would make sure that that meets the requirements.
Okay. So we're going to screen the cars and, all right.
Absolutely, yes.
You know, I think this is a very worthwhile project, Ben, and I think it's important for us to update this. So, yes, I'm not against that. I just, the aesthetics that we've fought for so, for so many years to make our city special, you know, I just hate to see any of it diluted, so.
Good. Anything else?
No, I just would like to add what John's saying, that we have spent a lot of time talking about the ever-changing workforce and the way that companies are currently operating and probably will for the next 20 or more plus years. So we know that we need to, we need to change parking lots in many of our existing corporate buildings. And I think that the key will be the perimeter screening, because that is still something that can be done in all of these circumstances, I'm sure, and will still give the beauty that John spoke of and that people look for in our community as this project is done as well. And I too want to thank Ben for putting up with our six months of wait. We'll get to it, and we'll discuss this, and we'll come to some agreement. You've been patient, but you also have changed the original application to meet the requirements and the intent and spirit of our code. So I appreciate that.
Thanks, Mary Lee. Okay?
If I could...
You may.
I, I think everybody knows where I'm going with this. The Lorax is one of my favorite books, even as an adult. And I feel very strongly about this site and the trees in question, that, you know, we're going to take them out for, you know, 50 or so parking spaces. And I know that, you know, my neighbors, we drive by this every day, and that, and we have the water tower, and somehow having those trees there takes away from the fact that we've got the water tower. It's sort of as a buffer. They're quite beautiful. You know, they're said to be in poor condition. I don't know how you could sit beneath them on a summer day and say that they're in poor condition. They're beautiful. They leaf out every year. You know, they're, they're, they might be towards the end of their lifespan, but they're still very viable and still, I would argue, very valuable, and in fact, too valuable to take them down for the construction of a parking lot. And let me say, I fully understand that we do need to change our parking code to allow more parking spaces than we traditionally have. I agree with that. I think for this particular building, for this particular site, it's the wrong thing to do. I am, you know, I can't support this. I would ask you guys not to support this. It's not necessary. It's a negligible amount of revenue, jobs that we're talking about. I think that, you know, at some point, a tenant will come and fill this building, and will say, you know, "Gosh, we're glad we saved those trees." This is a very unique site. You can't point to another parking lot in the community, at least I hope we don't have any other parking lots where we're going to take down, you know, five big, beautiful, mature, full-height trees. And I know, you know, when the inevitable question comes, you know, if this is approved tonight, why in the world are you guys taking those trees down? Where are those trees going? What's happening with this? You know, the answer is, well, we cut them down to build a parking lot. And that would make me hang my head in shame. And so I can't support this for this site. These trees, I believe, are too valuable to, to allow this. I think there's, you know, you may be able to squeeze in some other parking spaces in here, but those trees, I, I just can't see it. So I will not be supporting this tonight, and I would urge you to not support it as well.
Thank you, Amy. We understand your angst. Ann?
Ms. Genisi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
No.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes. Okay, that brings it to order. It's 11 dash 14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute assignment.
Can I say one thing?
Very quickly.
Very quickly. I've been coming to Dublin for 45 years. This is my last council meeting.
What? Wow. Well, I know everybody values your input on the many, many years that you've been involved, and you, your word has always been the gold standard of the people that we hear from. When you say something's going to happen, it happens. And I think I can speak on behalf of all of council that we all believe that. And we thank you for your service.
Good luck to you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Ben, it's sort of an end of an era. First, it was Harrison, and now you're leaving. And, I mean, it's been 33 years.
We're already behind you, Ben.
You and I have been duking it out here, and it's all been good. And just what, just what Mike said's been true. You've stated your cases fairly, and you've always said the truth, and I think you tried to present things in a fair and objective way, and you had great insight. And I think a lot of times, it was your input that caused the developer in the case to do something above the normal standard, because you advised him to do so. And I've seen that in a number of cases. I want to thank you for that.
That's true. We appreciate it. Been working with you for about 20 years, Ben. And I've enjoyed it. I really have. You may not have always thought I did, but I really did.
I know, I've talked to you.
That's right, and you did yours very well.
Yeah.
I've had 37 years with him, and I second that. You know, if I have to deal with the developer's lawyer, it's nice to deal with one that you don't have to send 18 emails. You just shake a hand and say, "We're going to do this," so.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing we always notice is when, when the few times that somebody actually brought, came in with a different lawyer, the second time they had had to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a very good point.
Yeah. Hate to see you go, Ben.
Yep. All right, then. Back to ordinance, 11 dash 14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute assignment, real property, necessary conveyance documentation to acquire 10.00 acres, more or less, be simple, and to us located east of Village Parkway, south of Tuller Road from Commercial Site Acquisitions, Inc., for Parkland and Wrighta Way.
Ms. Grigsby?
Yeah, as we discussed at the last council meeting, this ordinance relates to the acquisition of 10 acres at the intersection of Village Parkway and Cooperstone Drive. And currently, the Casto Communities Management Company has an option to purchase this site, and this allows us to obtain the assignment of those rights and acquire this property for the future extension of John Shields Parkway. The acquisition price is $4.6 million. And the only change from the last discussion that we had is that we would like to request adoption by emergency action this evening so that we continue to move forward with the acquisition of the property.
Very good. I think we're all well aware of this, this particular ordinance and the importance to the city. Council questions?
I move that we treat it as an emergency.
Just a second. We have some public testimony. We do that first, Ann?
Yeah. Do we have anyone? No one?
I thought you, I thought Mr. Mauer had signed it.
He has signed it, right. Should take that first.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Mauer? Sorry.
When I sat down after asking the question about...
Sorry.
High-quality corporate image. Hale said to me, "It's like pornography. You know it when you see it." Well, maybe I should put there. I have one question. This is, this relationship between Casto and buyers and the city is quite the most complex, interrelated, and intertangled one I've run across. But I think I've worked my way through it, but I have just one question. Buyers in the position of offering these 10 acres to Casto said the cost would be $4,600,000. Now, I've tried to track that figure through all the material, but couldn't do so. So my ultimate question is, if the city, we buy it, is that the price, $4,600,000?
That's correct.
Is that's correct?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. And you got it?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, you want to go forward with the motion?
I move that we treat it as an emergency.
Ann?
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zerker?
Yes.
Ann on the ordinance?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 1014.
Acknowledging that Ohio University has met the Subarea 1 development requirements in accordance with ordinance 2212 and the Associated Economic Development Agreement.
Introduction. Amy? Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you. Good evening. City Council previously passed ordinance number 22-12 in April of 2012. That ordinance authorized the execution of an economic development agreement between the city and Ohio University for the extension campus of Ohio University's Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine, as well as associated bio-science, medical research, and education facilities. If passed, resolution 10-14 would acknowledge that Ohio University has met the Subarea 1 requirements of the Economic Development Agreement. In effect, the definition of the Subarea 1 requirements were provided in the staff report, and it basically says that in order for Ohio University to receive the Subarea 1, you might recall there were three subareas. Actually, there's four areas. About 15 acres and the existing three buildings that existed on that are referenced as the Ohio University property. The university did purchase those, as well as, there's also about 96 acres around that that the city leveraged into the Economic Development Agreement with them. That 96 acres was divided down into three subareas. As I, as I spoke to, this references specifically Subarea 1. The agreement said that if Ohio University closed on those three buildings and renovated them, and then established the School of Osteopathic Medicine, then the city would go ahead and transfer or release what is Subarea 1 to them for future expansion. Staff and legal staff has looked at this in light of the Subarea 1 development requirements, and looked at that in light of what they're currently doing. And as we state in the recommendation portion of our report, we believe that they have substantially met those requirements, and that we recommend that you pass this ordinance to release Subarea 1 to them. Subarea 1, again, is about 25, or about, I'm sorry, about 46.4 acres. And as I list in the recommendation, we believe they substantially meet the requirement because Ohio University has purchased the three buildings and closed on them. They significantly have renovated those buildings. In fact, they're almost complete. They'll be complete early this summer with those. They have recruited already over 50 students, and their, their student load for the first class is 50. They've recruited over 50 students already. They are in pursuit of their accreditation requirements already, and really have already received a significant check off on those accreditation requirements. And then lastly, they, as you are aware, they want to build a nearly 100,000-square-foot building on Subarea 1, which is why they'd like to go ahead and have that released. That has gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission process, as you know, has been approved. This building would accommodate a physician assistant school, as well as other health sciences. You also may have read in the paper last week where Columbus State is looking to relocate their facilities that are in Dublin to this building. That's not yet complete, but it's under significant discussion, and seems to be pretty positive. So looking at all this in light of what they've accomplished already, we recommend that you pass this resolution to release Subarea 1 to Ohio University.
Very good. You know, I've been really impressed with OU's commitment to the city, not only the past, but the present. Tim and I read a Chamber economic forecast, and I think they had half of OU's professorial group and presidents and everybody there. So they're definitely here. They're committed, and they're doing exactly what they said was going to happen. So really appreciate that. Council questions? Hearing none? Ann?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 17-14.
Affirming key public infrastructure improvement projects in the Saito River Corridor of the Bridge Street District, and directing the administration to proceed with the final design of those public improvements included in the 2014 to 2018 capital improvements program.
I'll reduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Fugler?
Thank you. We've attempted in the resolution for you tonight to kind of summarize and authorize those next-level design activities that were discussed and reviewed with you at council's recent retreat. In effect, building upon the planning that's been done to date, the capital plans that have been proved to date, number of the public processes that we have held with regard to the planning for the river corridor, we'd like authorizations from council tonight, both to affirm some of the key results of that planning process, as well as authorize us moving forward with the design of... moving forward with the design of all those public improvements that are currently within your five-year capital plan in the river corridor, as well as one additional roadway. Within the informations before you tonight, we're asking authorization to proceed with the final design of the roundabout for one sixty-one and Riverside Drive. The preliminary engineering for that is complete. Also asking for the continuation of the final design for the relocated Riverside Drive in this area. That will also include this piece here of the, in effect, missing link of John Shields Parkway through a previous agreement for the development of the nursing home. We have an obligation to complete this year that portion of John Shields Parkway. The agreements also require us to build this at a later timeframe, but given the design work moving forward at this time, it's appropriate to complete the design of this now. This also includes, then, the grading and utility planning for the park area adjacent to that road. So, all of those elements are consistent with the planning. The one new piece that isn't in your capital plan is a connection that's shown generally through here, which will extend and connect Tuller Ridge with Dale. Really becomes one of the first new north-south connection points within the grid of the Bridge Street District. And the timeframe for that is such that we would expect both to accelerate the design of that connection and hopefully advance and complete, if possible, the construction of that this year. That will allow for flexibility, then, for implementation of other improvements as we move forward, and will bring before you the necessary legislation related to acquisition and other items for that to occur. Generally, we think and hope that this summarizes the items that we reviewed with you from transportation planning perspective, and would be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
Thank you, Terry. This has been kind of like a last three or four years, a slow-motion kind of thing that looks to me to be about to go into hyperspeed.
I think you're correct.
We appreciate that. Council questions?
I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understood that what we're approving is, of course, to go to the next level on all of these that are listed, as well as the design and actual construction of the Tuller Ridge expansion and the John Shields. Is that correct?
It's the Tuller Ridge Dale Drive connector. And once we are to the construction point, there'll be a construction contract that will come back to council for award of the contract. But, yeah, this would allow us to move forward.
Can you highlight that again, real quick?
I'm sorry?
The extension?
Yes. That'll be from roughly this point where Tuller Ridge curves down to this point on the curve of Dale Drive.
Okay. Anything else, Marla?
That's the one piece that we do expect, however, to come back for construction authorization this year for.
I know that in discussions recently with interviews, that there was some questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission about our approval process for some of these kinds of connectors and road alignment. So, I presume that if we pass this this evening, that that information would be shared with the commission that we've approved going to the next step based on the plans that we've already reviewed.
That is correct. I think there's, on a number of fronts, individuals who have regard to park configurations and questions of planning commission about potential future bridge crossings and other series. And we felt it was appropriate, if we're going to move these forward, to affirm the planning consistent with the thoroughfare plan that councils adopted at this point in time. Otherwise, it did not make sense to move forward with hanging questions and do the final design. So, those will be communicated to planning commission, communicated more broadly with the public, and is fully consistent with the capital programming that you've already approved as well.
Very good. Anyone?
Yeah, Terry, along those lines, we have, at one point, there was a discussion of needing a second vehicular bridge between two seventy and Bridge Street, and having two bridges crossing, vehicular bridges crossing the river. And I'm looking at this, and it's showing one on this plan. Tell me what we looked at when we decided that we didn't need that second crossing, I guess, further to the south?
Sure.
How did we come up with that?
As part of the analysis, it started last winter when we looked at and said, "Let's focus on the river corridor." We looked much more closely at those alternatives and those options. And in effect, that second bridge did not play a role for relieving traffic at our critical intersections. In other words, that bridge going in doesn't make our future life at Bridge and High any better, or doesn't really impact functionality of the roundabout and those kind of key elements. It was a nice point of connectivity for the east and west sides of Bridge Point. To do that, however, would effectively preclude the pedestrian bridge crossing in this location. And with the pedestrian bridge being both pedestrian and bicycle, as well as the vehicular bridge being added to the north, given the number of bridges that exist for vehicular options, the recommendation we made through the framework planning process was that we go with the pedestrian bridge at the southern crossing point and the full-service vehicular bridge, which will include pedestrian and bicycle at the John Shields Parkway crossing, and that functionally that would work well for this area. And that's the way the planning has moved forward.
All right. And just in round numbers, how much does a vehicular bridge across the river cost?
A bridge?
Yeah.
I think the number that the city engineer threw out, ten to twelve million, I think, was the number, but that was based on some pretty old comps, I do believe. So, we'd want to generate some new estimates on that.
You also mentioned it depends on the lane, number of lanes, and all those kind of things in terms of design, so.
But minimum of ten million dollars we're saving.
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that. And then also, with regard to the pedestrian bridge, we talked about the location and having some certainty about that, which I would think would be pretty important to development on both sides of the river. At what point will that location be determined?
I think there's two elements there. We asked that we wanted to look at some cost-savings design alternatives for you, which is the biggest design implication in the near term. And we've got the proposal today that within five to six weeks, we should have both the design alternatives, renderings that allow you to look at them and compare them, and the modified cost elements on that. So, in six weeks, we expect to have those completed. The landing points that we are looking at, the reason there's a potential variation on those landing points is the emerging private developments that are creating new and different opportunities there on that. But I would think as part of what we share with you in six weeks, it's going to have the preferred landing, but those still could be impacted on the west side by some of those private development decisions. But I think we'll be in a much better position six weeks from now to give you a good sense of that piece. The bigger issues are going to be elements of certain parts of the pedestrian structure being looked at differently as a cost-savings measure. It's always going to be in this general location. We're talking slight modifications on the western landing point of the bridge.
Can you say slight, like ten feet, a hundred feet?
I would say moving from the location that you see there, probably moving there to fifty feet north of there. Right now, what we want to have happen is the pedestrian circulation to that bridge, which will be significant, to be as free of conflict with vehicles as it can be. And there's a lot of private development being proposed adjacent to that area, feeding to that area. We want it to be as attractive and appropriate coming from High Street to that area. So, those are the drivers that are causing us to look at that a little more closely.
Very good. Anybody else? Mr. Maurer?
Talk about choice of a word. I'm not unsure ground when I ask this question. And the word I'm not sure of is the word status, which I'm about to use. What is the current status of citizen acceptance and cooperation and citizen resistance to the carving out of the Bridge Street corridor? Does that make sense?
When you say carving out of the Bridge Street corridor, is that the Bridge Street District idea in general?
Yeah, and the people, the citizens, all citizens who are involved in it, some of them, I gather, were appreciative and cooperative, and some were resistant, I guess. And I have not, I confess, I have not followed this closely in recent...
Mr. Maurer, there's a few things we deal with that we don't have people that are for what we do and against what occurs, even right down to bike paths and other smaller projects. That's part of public service.
I think the survey work that has been done publicly, that the city had done with Marty Saperstein, we did give some presentations here, overwhelmingly strong citizen support for the idea and the goals of Bridge Street. With the public meetings we've had, we have put online all the significant questions and our responses to them, and those are kept updated repeatedly. Part of what we shared with council at their goal setting was a series of videos and other kinds of explanatory materials to address the questions that citizens do ask. But in terms of the survey work that has been done with the community, very strong, I think, alignment with council's general direction on it, traffic and other issues being the things that we get asked most frequently and need to be able to respond to.
All right, thank you.
And I think as far as the business community, we even heard earlier this evening that the individual that was here accepting the proclamation mentioned that this is the type of area that businesses are looking to locate. And I would also recommend that citizens take a look at the video that's out on the website related to interviews that were done with representatives from the various businesses in the community as to why they believe Bridge Street's important to them as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Any other discussion, questions?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Okay, staff comments, Marcia?
Yeah, the first item related to the resolution that we just discussed was the discussion that we had at goal setting, and then also that's in the memo, talking about project review. And we currently have the Casto Tuller Flats project, that there's significant infrastructure that the city needs to partner with the developer of this project on. And council had talked at goal setting about wanting to have some early views of that information before we present an economic development agreement to council. And because of the timeframe that they've been working under, and they laid their presentation to P and Z in order to have the meeting with council, we're looking at next Monday, March seventeenth, if that would work for council. If not, we'll look for the next off Monday.
I can do that. Everybody good?
Let's do it.
You all right, Tim?
Okay. Seven?
I would shoot for seven at this point. We'll confirm that.
Seven. All right.
Two hours?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Fugler. Anything else, Marcia?
Just quickly, I would like to thank all the staff that's involved in the preparation for the State of the City, leading up to the State of the City, the evening of, and afterwards, especially the community relations staff that puts together the plan for the State of the City. And also like to thank Joe and John for all of their video work that they put together. The videos are a big hit and help tell our story a little more interesting than us just standing up there talking about it. So, thanks to everybody involved. And then also, just to highlight the memo that was in your packet with regard to potential memorial tournament, interaction or community activities for this year, and that if council has any feedback tonight, we'd be happy to take that, or if there's additional time that you need or have any questions for us, we'd be happy to address those questions.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Take us to council committee reports, and I know that the administrative committee, Rick, is not here, but Mary Lee will report on that.
Yes, the administrative committee has been meeting continuously, I think, for the last two months. But most recently, we did have a Saturday that we interviewed magistrate applicants for mayor's court. Rick, myself, Greg, Mike, and Tim were present, and we'll be bringing forth recommendations for that. Also, last week, we had, all council was present, and we interviewed applicants for the board and commission positions that are available, and we'll bring forth recommendations at our March twenty-fourth council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for community development, John?
Yes, we're going to have our meeting here on Wednesday at six PM, if that's still acceptable with the other committee members. And we'll see then.
Another meeting. Finance?
Nothing to report.
Nothing there. And public services, Amy?
We don't have anything at this point.
Okay. All right, council roundtable. Greg?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Amy?
I had an opportunity at the State of the City, actually, to have a conversation with Patrick Lizinski of the library. And he indicated to me that the library is eager to engage with council, talking about their ideas and their plans. And I just wanted to make the rest of council aware that I had had that conversation. Maybe some of you got a chance to talk with him as well. But I would be interested in having that conversation with him. He indicated that, you know, his team would like to come here and sit with us. And I said, you know, "We have these off Mondays study session opportunities." Excuse me, study session opportunities, and I'm thinking that that might be a good venue for him to come and bring his team, and we can talk a little bit about what their thoughts are. I know council really has expressed desire to be involved in that and be aware of their sites and everything that they're considering.
Yeah, and we have been having conversations with them, and we're trying to get a meeting set up to go over what they're looking at as criteria for a site. And that has come up in the conversation about either coming to a council meeting or at least some other meeting to have the conversation and interaction with council. So, if you prefer that as an off Monday, we can go ahead and check to see if the next off Monday is March thirty-first, if that's something that would work on your calendar, or if you'd prefer to wait until April. And then we can coordinate with Pat and his staff on timing for them as well.
I think council's really receptive and does want to be involved, so you're thinking about a separate session altogether.
We can do it that way. He mentioned at one point coming to a council meeting, and so we can do it either them coming to update you, or just schedule a separate meeting to do the update and then to have conversation and discussion about the project.
Site selection's a big part of this. Would that be something we'd do before a meeting?
Well, they're starting to look at what their criteria for a site is.
Is that an executive session item?
No, I think it would be, yeah. That would definitely be executive session.
Well, if we start looking at potential sites and discussing them, those would be discussed in executive session as land acquisition.
Well, I know I'm interested in where it's going to be, and I think everybody else on council is as well.
And I don't know that they're to the point yet of talking about any specific sites, but that's something that, especially if it's further out in the month or early in April, they may have a little more idea and have had some additional conversations and follow-ups. So, we can schedule the meeting, and if it does get to the point where there's discussion on sites, then we can adjourn into executive session.
Well, what if we leave open, you know, the thirty-first or the seventh, and then we have the twenty-first open as well, and, you know, find out what works for them?
Mm-hmm. We'll follow up.
All right.
Yeah, is the consensus? I mean, I'd prefer to have a workshop-style meeting.
I would as well.
I think so, too.
I would, too, but I won't be present. I'm not available on the thirty-first.
And you're talking April seventh, would you be okay?
Would be the next.
Why don't we try and shoot for April seventh, then?
Okay.
That work?
We'll follow up with them and make sure they're available, and then let council know.
Okay.
Like a plan.
Anything else?
One thing that we talked about was having the discussion and sort of deliberation about our board and commission. I was going to contact Rick and find out if he would be available, since we're going to be together a week from tonight, from seven to nine. Perhaps we could meet at six and have that discussion, if that works for the chair of the committee. I don't know how everybody feels about that, but since we're all going to be here anyway, maybe is that something that we could consider and then get back with you guys?
Next Monday?
Next Monday, yeah. Because we would need to meet and discuss this before the twenty-fourth, when we hope to do the appointments.
Okay.
All right. That is all I have. Thank you.
That works, Mary Lee?
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on the Bran Road bike path. And as the weather is improving, what is our timeframe for that project?
Do we have an update, or is that something?
It's really as we reported previously in the staff report, which is, we're hopeful to be back under construction in April. The winter has been tough, even on the bridge construction. They were hopeful to get more of the foundations constructed over the winter. That just hasn't been possible. So, our last conversation with them was completion in the first part of May. So, that's what we're going to drive them towards.
Completion?
Yeah.
Wow.
The Bran Road path, yes, the part that was started from Muirfield Drive all the way to the roundabout.
Great. And then, since you're standing there, progress on Emerald Parkway?
Blasting right through it, so.
Yeah, we heard about it. Thank you.
Yeah, everything's gone well. Actually, the Conspan Bridge over Billings Lake Creek is going to be set tomorrow. Waterline work has been proceeding up at Bright Road, along with Santerre Sewer work, and then also burial of the overhead utilities along Bright Road. And then, as you've seen from Emerald Parkway and Riverside, the... And then, as you've seen from Emerald Parkway and Riverside, the continual blasting of the rock going up the hill. So all is moving along quickly.
Great.
Again, the weather has been somewhat of a hindrance.
Has everything that was shared with the neighbors about process and all, has that been able to be followed pretty closely?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
And we've had some folks comment they've noticed the tremors after the blast, but, you know, probably more startling than damaging. I mean, again, we never expected that, so.
Very good.
Thanks. I just wanted to say to staff that was able to recruit the Chevrolet of Dublin, which has just moved in, you know, on Post Road, that I see where they are a sponsor of the St. Patty's Day. So congratulations to bringing them into participation so quickly in our community. That's a great opportunity for them.
Mary Jo does a very good job of getting out there and interacting with new businesses.
Twisting her.
Right, yeah. And the Updocks that was here earlier this evening, you know, I think it's a great example of what happens as a result of us supporting startups and offering the services that we've been offering now, maybe five years or something. And, you know, I hope that through Dublin Life that we're able to share these stories, because then I think a broader audience both sees the progress. We were able to see the big companies that are in our community because of the big buildings and their big names, but we have many, many more smaller companies that are becoming bigger companies and are doing some very unique and innovative businesses. So I hope we can encourage Dublin Life to do stories on them throughout the year. And I wanted to congratulate you and all the staff on the State of the City. I sent Marcia an email afterwards saying that, I don't know, anybody that could have been sitting there that wasn't just really proud of whatever their relationship was with our city. You know, we have, everything is just really magnificent, both our presentation, our success, but the participation of people coming, I think, is really a tribute to the excitement of people being in our community. We used to, years ago, have a number of people came, but the last few years, it's been mostly us, you know, talking to ourselves. And so the last couple of years, and Wendy's is a terrific host, and certainly would want to thank them for that. And last, I, well, I did want to just comment, thank you to the chief for the information on the distracted driving education efforts. They look excellent, and your goals look really good. And I wonder how many police departments really have goals like that? I don't know. But it's terrific that we do. And then I wanted to comment on the memorial tournament memo that was given to us. I personally can support. At first, I want to say that I believed, and I still believe, that all of the things that we did in 2013 around the President's Cup was because it was a unique opportunity for us, that we would only have one time in our lifetime. And so I wasn't expecting to repeat everything that we did, as it set it apart to be something different and to be raised up as a unique opportunity for the community. The majority of things that are listed, I don't particularly have a problem with. I think, as Marcia, you communicated with me, the Leadership Breakfast has a great opportunity to it for everyone involved. I do not believe that ForFest is something that should be repeated on an annual basis. It's an event, first of all, and we have had brief discussions about, do we not have enough events in our community? And I think that we need to have a more comprehensive discussion with council and the event staff about that. And, you know, is this something that in the future we'd do instead of something else we do? Because that isn't really the primary purpose of the municipal government, in my mind. But in terms of the, you know, the golf balls seem to be something that corporations enjoy doing, and, you know, the flags, those kinds of things, you know, I think we did them tastefully. They were up and then they were down, and that is some of the things, I think, that are really important, to not leave them up forever and ever and things of that nature. But that's my input into that memo. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Tim?
Well, I'd like to follow up on Mary Lee's comments with respect to the Division of Police's goals for 2014, focusing on the reduction of property crime, reduction of traffic crashes, preparation for major crimes, critical incidents and issues of community concern. And in that memo, I believe we've been apprised of this in the somewhat recent past, but I still think it's worth noting, the reduction in crime in 2012 compared to our peer municipalities in the central Ohio area. And it's very impressive, I think. And so Division of Police is to be complimented on that. And then also, I guess that's a segue into another memo that we received from the chief. And we'd heard about a couple of these before, including Dublin's ranking as the 12th safest city in Ohio. Another ranking found Dublin to be one of the top 100 safest cities in the U.S. And then this most recent recognition, I don't know exactly how it's pronounced, but it looks to be Movoto.com, and it is ranking Dublin as the fourth safest suburb in America. So obviously largely attributable to our Division of Police. So congratulations. Appreciate that. And then finally, looking forward to seeing everyone this Saturday at the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Very good. Coming up.
Hope it'll be like today. We'll see. Thank you.
Indeed, not like Thursday. John?
Want to wish our city solicitor a post happy birthday. Sorry, I missed it. And I want to say that Fred Hahn, the Mount Zion Cemetery project, was amazing, that those things could be restored. Those are some very early entrepreneurs, some of which blew up in an accident, their boiler. And it's a very interesting and historic site. And boy, did they do a great job restoring that. I was really impressed that could even be restored to that level. So I don't know who does it or how it was handled, but it was really, really a nice project. So congratulations on that. Ran into Don Teaberry at church, and he said, "Thank you to all of you for your efforts on the distracted driving effort." He's really proud of what we're trying to do, and of course, it's very personal to him. And the last thing is, I want to just say that congratulations to Mr. Hadaka, somebody who's just amazing and just loves Dublin and is so enmeshed in our community. And for him to be selected the Businessperson of the Year, what a great guy. And I know he does a lot with you, Dana, and he does a lot to promote our city. He's just really a wonderful person. And see you guys Wednesday night. It looks like we've got stuff to do about every night this week, so take care.
Thank you, John. Well, I echo everybody's comments about the distracted driving issue. I made a note that I wanted also to thank the chief for the efforts and bringing us up to speed on what's been done. So that's important that we continue that for our children, our children that will soon be driving, and our adult children that we worry about each and every day. So I had an opportunity to meet the council general from Japan shortly after our magistrate's meeting. Thanks for the urging there, Tim, at the end of the day. It was a long day as it was, but he was quite a gentleman, and it was a pleasure to meet him and shared some experiences when we had the Rotarian exchange student from Japan that lived with us for a year or so. We had some commonalities there. I believe that is it, and we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.